Hi, everyone. Good evening. It is six oh two P M. This is the regular business meeting in Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I was a citizen of America and you see the public tourist stands on the Indian Indian physical.
Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lemon, I'm via Zoom Supervisor Michael Albert, Township Manager Julia Howlett, Minister Coordinator Jessica Hodge, and Mayor John Trustler and Solicitor Ron Karasak. Announcements. We had executive sessions evening from five thirty to five thirty-nine regarding attorney client privilege matters. Fall pick for the Poconos is tomorrow. We're meeting at Mount Nevo Park. I'll let Julia talk about that in a little bit. Fall leaf pickup starts October twenty-seventh and runs through November twenty-first. Trunk or treat fall fest is Saturday the twenty-fifth here at the municipal center. We're still looking for registrations for trunks. Should be a great time. First order of business, the consideration of the consent agenda, which is the approval of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, resolution number six oh three, fee schedule update. Consideration of authorize the advertisement draft ordinance number two sixty-one revisions to the environmental advisory council composition. Consideration to approve the special event permit for Liberty Tree Ranch for Rancho Fest and a consideration for the approval of the October eighth bill pack totaling five hundred nine thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Just note it is large because that's basically all the paving through the year is in that. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Supervisor Albert right here. Second.
Second.
Second, above and under discussion.
Yeah, what changed in the fee schedule?
Um, you'll see two changes in the fee schedule. The first one is putting nine hundred one addressing signs in our fee schedule. Um, we've had them available at the township for decades and we I found proof of us charging ten dollars to them all the way back in two thousand and four.
It's the green ones?
The green ones, yes, either vertical or horizontal. Um, but it seems that it was never officially made a part of our fee set schedule, so that is on there.
Uh, ten dollars?
Ten dollars.
Okay.
Um, the second update is to allow Marshall's Falls to be rented out for small scaled private weddings.
And what was the amount on that?
Two hundred and fifty dollars plus a hundred dollar deposit and a certificate of insurance consistent with the special event permit.
Correct.
That begins. Uh, thirty guests or less. So we all kind of come here now anyway.
And just so we're all on the same page, the change to the revision of the environmental advisory council composition allows for alternance?
Yeah, it it basically gives voting rights to be alternates when the farm's not present.
And then I was gonna ask that question. The bill packet's pretty significant, but that is that is two different townships on on paving?
Uh, so in the highway fund, we'll see the last two hundred eighty thousand dollars that was spent.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty of that is line painting throughout the camp or excuse me, not line painting, asphalt maintenance solutions was the company that
One forty-eight.
Chip, uh, right, all of Franklin Hill Road. And then the rest of the funds that you'll see dispersed in there are for improvements to River Road that were just recently completed.
That's all stone core. Prices, this Eureka.
Yeah, uh, the hundred and twenty.
Thirty-one.
Yeah, that sounds correct.
That's just for supplies. We did, we was done in-house?
Yes.
I mean, and just so I know and so public knows, so we've been doing this with Middle Smithfield. Do we, how does that work from a financial perspective? Do we like share time? Do we pay Middle Smithfield for their staff or how does it work?
We share time and equipment.
Yeah, there's no finances going back and forth when we do this. Um, Middle Smithfield Township will say, hey, we need two trucks and we go great. We need two flyers and it's.
Yeah. Is it like about even?
Yes.
So like if we use their crew for two days, they get our crew for two days or something like that?
Yeah. And it allows.
Well, God River Road down.
Yeah, I I mean, I drove by where I saw it was both crews and so. Okay, that's there and then um the fifty-six from Dark Excavating? Where that is?
Uh, for Dark, uh, Excavating is the company that was on my household.
Ah. I haven't been by to see that it's gone. Um. I will do that now. That's all my questions on the bills and that's all my questions on the consent agenda.
Okay. What else? One favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, of course. Um, emergency services. Okay. It comes from, all right, Norma, do you have anything you want to add?
No, we're all doing fine.
Yeah, the only thing I I was gonna say is I was at the community night, uh, last night at J C L and that was awesome, well attended by the public and local, uh, fire, including their own EMS too.
Yeah, they and they also vend all the school drinks or all the school buildings. And then our recovery carrier.
Terrific. Okay. Solicitor.
One more, one more.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you behind that.
Be back soon.
Okay, go ahead.
We'll be, we'll be at Trump or treat again for you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ron, onto you.
Well, there really has not been any significant work done in the last couple of weeks and other than that we or I or the township did receive an appeal filed by Water Gap acquisition partners with respect to the denial of their land development plan. So that appeal is filed, which the county support and will be heard by judge uh, in that matter. Uh, we also did receive a an appeal by uh Water Gap with respect to the enforcement notice that was issued with respect to the finding that it was a drug and alcohol center and not an inn. So that appeal has been filed and there is a hearing scheduled before the zoning hearing board. It was scheduled for this coming Tuesday, but the township received a letter from their attorney asking that the matter be continued uh, through the end of the year. So right now I believe it's looking at potential hearing sometime in December, depending upon who may or may not be available. Uh, we also received the the follow and final briefs from uh, the Mount Manor case along with the a notice on the Carol appeal that the zoning hearing board did not file in a brief, but they're not going to. They're just gonna rely upon the briefs that I prepared on behalf of the township. And other than that, and I just brought this just for clarification, these are my September emails that I have not yet gone through.
Um, just so tip tip, can I have a quick question, um, related to our gap wellness? So that's stay, that stays, that is being continued, that's what you call it until December?
Well, until a new hearing date has been set. It may not be December. Right now I believe our township manager is doing her best to try to see if she can get a date in December, but it's been extended through December thirty-one. Uh, and I've looked at the legend so that the the time limit will not be used against the the zoning hearing board. So it can be anytime, could be November, could be, you know, middle December.
Typically, as I understand, the township would not file any sort of injunction un- unless the zoning hearing board decision was made.
Until the zoning hearing board decision is made, no.
Okay.
Not in that same same thing in Mount Manor. Till that decision was made, the township did not take any action.
All right, just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. So that means then next week's meeting or hearing was postponed for December now?
All right, well, it's shooting for December. Could be another date, but it's not next week, but it's not next week now. That we know.
If if I can jump in with the township manager's report just on this item, I confirmed at three o'clock today that we were gonna cancel. Um, so there is a notification on the board downstairs. Our website is not yet updated, but nothing will occur on the fourteenth. Um, we're reaching out to all these at this time to determine who's and when. Uh, as soon as I have that information, it'll be up on the website.
Okay, appreciate that.
Awesome.
And and other than that update that pretty much takes care of it for the last couple of weeks since we were here the last time.
They, God. They don't have a whole lot, uh, going on in the last couple of weeks. Uh, Missy did submit the uh master plan to D C N R for review. And yesterday we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor by state for uh the improvements to post office for the bridge. They're getting started on that right away.
How long has it got started? Do you know how long it'll take?
We're, we're shooting for about sixty days together.
Okay, great.
Uh, we reviewed the schedule. Biggest lead time is really getting the, uh, not that we're using a lot of it, but we have to get some steel fabricated. So
Right.
that's the biggest lead time.
Uh, I do have one question before it was posed to me. And this regards the Delaware Water Gap Wellness Center. Uh, as you know, they had a land development plan before the township, which township subsequently denied. However, that plan, the plan was submitted uh, for a recreational facility, which was to be new construction. However, they also showed a maintenance building on there which has already been constructed. Uh, and they they were told by Kenwell and issued a permit by Kenwell to build that building. So they didn't do anything that they probably shouldn't have done except that Ken should have told them neither the land development plan. Uh, so what they did was they were including it within this most recent additions and the M T D S, the conservation district is also making them design stormwater for that maintenance building. So their engineer reached out to us and said, well, now that our plan has been denied, what does the township want us to do about that maintenance building? My thought is that it really should be a land development plan. I don't think they should be dirt around for it. It is what it is. They did build it under a building permit. Uh, I'm thinking we should just ask them to submit a single sheet record plan showing it for signatures from the supervisors so that it can be reported. We've got a good paper trail for that. If the board is in agreement with that.
I mean, yeah, I I don't know what other option we would have. Um, and obviously at that time when there was a building permit, there was no evidence that had been collected by the zoning officer that it was not a inn. So if that would have been allowed into that, there would have been no problems anyway. The reason why this one was denied was because the zoning officer um, indicated that it was no longer an inn. So, um, I don't know why there'd be a problem with that unless Ron has any.
No, if the engineer is okay with it, it'd be for me to sour the cereal then. That's for the one that's already there.
Yeah, yeah.
Then then we've got a record of it.
Thank you. Julian?
Okay, um, in September, the township received eight right to no requests and bring over so far, which brings the total to ninety-two for the year and just over a hundred and four hours of staff time. Uh, I don't have zoning officer permit issued numbers yet because our zoning officer is returning back to the office for vacation on Thursday. I'll have that next meeting. Uh, I successfully submitted four L S A grants last month. Uh, and I already spoke about the zoning hearing board. Um, you had mentioned Mount Nevo Park earlier. Uh, it we originally scheduled the cleanup for Fawn Road, uh, but some good Samaritan group went through and picked that up earlier this week. Um, when we had initially picked Fawn Road, we had identified two roads that ended the cleaning. One was Mount Nevo and one was Fawn. And we picked these two roads because they were narrow and needed a presence of flyers to ensure anyone picking up the road stayed safe. Uh, as such, we're going to shift pick up the Poconos to Mount Nevo Road or excuse me, Mount Nevo Park to clean up Mount Nevo Road. So we can get both of the roads done that we wanted to.
Is that that information up to date on the, where were people have signed up?
Uh, we've
Alex, I can you contact everyone?
Alex sent out an email. I don't know if he has updated the website yet. Again, that happened with about that that was early today.
Okay.
Um, so we'll be updated by tomorrow. Uh, lastly, Karen Azanadi is not able to be here for I A D six eleven report. Um, but she sent me more information for, uh, the institute choice and new dress. Um, Penn Doc has added new signage to the temporary light on state route six eleven to encourage patients and they confirmed that the light is working properly. Um, she also wanted me to mention that N P S is currently seeking comments and information to identify improvements that could be made to visitor services and parks. Um, anyone is welcome to submit a comment letter at the federal register until eleven fifty nine P M tomorrow. Great.
Okay. All right, so no I A D statement six eleven report, but that was that. We will see now Alex is not here to give anything, but I think there'll be more at the next meeting. Um, supervisor comments? Michael, Robert, anything?
No. Nothing.
Okay. All right, under all business, we have the Shawnee Valley P R D stage one developers, their stage one B developers agreement. I don't know, Ron, John, who wants to?
Well, let me just state the background because then it's gonna be kicked over to John and also to the supervisors. As with any land development plan, in order to proceed, there needs to be a land development improvements agreement that outlines what are going to be the improvements for that particular project. For example, uh, it's just gonna be roads that has to be specified, stormwater, sanitary sewer, uh, potable water. All those things have to be put in the agreement and specified as to what is going to be done. Uh, in this particular matter, there's also a stormwater agreement that will take care of the fact that if there's any stormwater issues, they will be handled by the developer and or the property owner of Fawn. His property, the stormwater facilities are situated. And then there's also the performance security. This particular case, a letter of credit has been proposed to be, uh, issued by Goldman Sachs, uh, in the amount of give me a moment here.
Six million.
Six million, six million sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars for, uh, the phase one, stage one, phase one, stage two, the sewer borings and the wetland mitigation. Uh, those agreements have been reviewed by both myself and counsel for Shawnee. Uh, and they are uh, prepared and and are in order. However, I understand that the supervisors may still have concerns about number one, when are required improvements to be made? Number two, uh, concerns with respect to, uh, the secondary access. And, uh, so those things have to be discussed by the board since those are policy issues. They are not legal issues as such. So that being said, you either have John take over or or take over.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be good to have John just go over what he has. I know you had to prepare a couple of estimates and different things this week.
Well, we actually prepared the estimate or reviewed the engineer, the process is the applicant's engineer prepares the estimate. We review it. Uh, we usually end up making some adjustments to make sure it's in line with what we believe are current costs. Uh, at the completion of that, I did raise a question about the phasing, um, raising the concern that something uh, unknown were to happen, uh, and the project stopped at the proposed phasing line limits, which is phase one and two. What the township would end up having essentially would be the one entrance into a fairly large development, which essentially would be one big cul-de-sac in terms of only one way in and one way out. Uh, the approved plan for this stage shows two ways in and out. Uh, one, the second access is across the dam breast and onto Hollow Road. That was not included in this phasing plan. I did raise it as an issue. Uh, the applicant, my understanding is, I have not seen anything in the process. My understanding is the applicant has said that you will keep two million dollars in the escrow account to cover the costs of crossing the lake and access on the hollow road. Uh, that seems like a logical step. However, I think there's two things missing. One, I don't know that two million dollars is adequate or not. Uh, we have nothing to review. Uh, two, I believe you need a permit across the lake. It is a stream. The E P regulates all those and I asked if a permit was uh, whether they had a permit for that yet, and I have not received an answer in the affirmative. So that would be a concern for me.
Well, let me ask you one thing, John, as I'm taking my notes. When you say that the two million dollars is adequate, that there's nothing to review it. What do you mean by the fact that there's nothing to review?
I don't have any plans for a bridge or the rest of the road to go from this phase over to Hollow Road, which is what the two million dollars is supposed to cover.
But you're saying about that if you have that, you can then determine whether the two million is sufficient or
Right.
whether more is needed.
Or less, or less. And I only need a million. I don't know, but I just, you're gonna need more than a million. The bridges are not cheap, but, uh, I have no way of estimating that.
And and then what, then tell me again here. I'm thinking those about the P A D E P permit. And the permit from D E P, it's not a local permit or it's not from dam and waterways or the other kind of.
Well, it is from D E P, but I I don't know whether they would need anything from dams and waterways since the dam is involved. If they're gonna span the dam completely with a bridge, they might be able to circumvent any need to get dams and waterways involved, but anyway, you cut it, you're crossing a street and you do need a permit to cross the stream from the D E P.
Yeah, tell me about the improvements for the plan as such. In other words, should there be any kind of timetable with respect to when improvements are to be in or done, or do we just go along our merry way and hope that things will be okay?
Well, typically, uh, there may be two issues. The the issue that I was aware of was the second access.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that that should be concluded as part of this or constructed as part of this this phasing. Um, and it certainly has to be completed before you would open another phase. I'm not saying that all the that road would have to be completed before you can start house construction. I think that's something that we would have to work out and the determine what's appropriate. If there are other, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, is that part of what should be in in this agreement now? Is it addendum or is this?
It maybe, yeah, I mean, we we can't build, I forget how many houses are in this phase. There's over a hundred. Can't build a hundred and ten thousand and still not have that second access or you should. I mean, we we should know when it's gonna be started. Um, the other issue that I wasn't aware of, but apparently there are some other off-site improvements that are supposed to be made. Uh, and I'm not sure what the scheduling is for them, but I think that should be identified uh, as part of the agreement. Uh, I believe there's supposed to be a traffic light at Mount Nevo and Buck Hill Falls.
Fair enough. I mean, uh, there definitely, I think there's a realignment. Is that right, Ted? Um, I I think there's something there, but.
But so if that is the fact that we have the case, then and that is supposed to be part of this stage, then I think we have to see what triggers that. And because I don't know that right now.
Let me ask you.
Miles then what?
One other question, John, and then I'll, you have the supervisors turn over it wherever they need it. Because this is a P R D, P R Ds are handled specially, as you know, under the law, like the zoning board instances don't apply, the subdivision or zone apply. Is there anything special here that could afford the applicant some relief because obviously they want to get moving and they want to get this going and they don't want to waste any more time. Is there anything special about the P R D that could give the applicant any relief or not?
Well, whether it's a P R D or subdivision, the applicant has a right to start construction uh, with an approved plan and he can he he can start the construction. The developers agreement is to protect the township. Uh and what that affords him is the opportunity to both start construction and pull building permits uh somewhat simultaneously, which is what most developers want to do. However, they do have the choice of putting in the improvements first without posting an escrow amount. And then, once they are in and accepted, then they can start pulling building permits, and they don't have to post any escrow at all. So that's that's the choice.
You say construction, you say construction means they can do site work.
Site work, yes. But they can't build.
They don't need this this document scientist. He doesn't need this document scientist.
He needs a modified one, which would include uh caveats like you can't pull a building permit till the improvements are done. You you and you've got to put in the monies for inspection. And there may be some other things that Ron may want to put in there, but it would be a much reduced uh level of contract documents or land development agreement.
It it's the the standard of either you put the improvements in at your own risk uh or you post the security to confer or to secure the fact that they will go in if in fact uh the app, the developer cannot complete that. And for, you know, sometimes for good reasons, developers in a car crash or something happens or who knows what, so uh that's the that that's the end of that yet. Either put the improvements in at your own risk, or you post a security.
All right, we can we hear Ted out so we can.
Yeah, I think I'd like, I think I'd like to ask you to give me specific questions, because you've covered a wide range of the kind of points here.
The two that I heard.
Your specific concerns.
Basically, just looking for milestones on what improvements are to be done when, just so we can identify that and then, hey.
We start with that.
Okay.
Let's start with that.
Sure.
Okay, that's okay. Are, we have a uh base, stated one B is of approximately three hundred homes and the infrastructure to support three hundred homes. That is not built all in a single moment. Uh if I refer historically, stage one A of the same P R D was built over a period that took many years. North Slope is one phase of it, Woodland Village and other phases, and Oakdale and other phases, not built all at once. And they in fact, the the precedent that we've uh thought of is that there was a single entrance for creative town. We respect, though, that you're you're looking for protecting yourself against having a default on our part and having it sit and never get finished. Respect that. Um our staging, our phasing plan within the stage has seven phases to complete. And the stick phase three and phase four, we were planning not to be able to work, uh open those up for for uh sale at slots until after we had made the connection, because at that point, we felt there were too many homes to be handled by the single entrance. So we only did phase one and two. Base three and four, we intended to be contingent, and we intended to have the second entrance finished for completion of that phase concurrently. Um I'll go back, you did ask another question, I'll cover and I'm thinking of.
Sure.
The question about crossing the water body is resolved. It is resolved. We have our D E P permit and our joint one oh five permits in hand for all the crossings. The roadways are in those plants. The bridge is in the dam plants. When the dam was rebuilt in twenty ten, the abutments were built for twenty-six foot wide bridge, two twenty-foot lanes, one six-foot pedestrian. I know you like walkways, like the crest of the dam has a path along it. That was in those that, those drawings, those permits. The crest of the dam is as wide as it is, over thirty feet because of the future roadway. So those are resolved. Uh we are working right now with dam safety, a variety of engineering details. The question about cost, which is important, we believe it's less than two million dollars. I respect that John doesn't know that. I have pricing on the H O P intersection, which is gonna be another nine months to get the permit finished. I have a an estimate for that. I have the estimate for the crossing work on the uh dam crest and paving and that work. I have the estimate for the bridge. It's the uh a design-built scenario of our U S Bridge, one of the larger companies in the country. And I could provide that backup to you within a week or less.
I I didn't know where you stood on all this, but this is informative.
Yeah, we just, well, vacation. You're allowed vacation. Uh but at any rate, so I could, I could quickly feed that information to John, make sure the township doesn't think that we're trying to get, you know, three million dollars worth of work covered, right, and get too much service protection. Uh we believe the numbers are correct. The problem is we can't put forward the bond, the work that's not been engineered enough to have precise competent numbers. We really would like to have the finished engineering detail of everything we're doing. Then we could, uh as we, as we complete that, the money we're holding back would be replaced by a specific performance bond for that specific piece of work, just like we would add phase three, just like you had fixed four. So we'd like to tie it to phase three and four. But let me ask you one thing, that, because again, you know, you're turning an eye, and I think you were part of means have gone through a bunch of time, been working on the improvements. Would you have any problem in adding to the improvements agreement in this section about the two million? Now, that's another issue with John, but that phase, stage three and four, does, or stage, however you want to say it, does not begin until this road is. Not begin. No, that would not be acceptable. We can't complete it and sell finished product lots in it. We have to build it at the same time. We would want to start the work on phase three and phase four, start the construction, place a new bond.
But no.
All right. No license.
What will be that language again? Will it be that language?
Broadly speaking, I don't know.
And I understand, I'm not holding you to it, just that you want to be able to do the work, but not we sell or sell homes or something going down that.
I mean, let me try and be very clear. Stage three and stage four.
Face.
Uh you're right, you're right, excuse me. Thank you. In stage one B, phase three and phase four can be constructed concurrently with the bridge, dam crossing, and H O P intersection of Hollow Road concurrently constructed. But no lot sales would be completed until the completion and turnover of the road and H O P intersection to the relevant parts.
So when you say constructed, you mean the site work can commence at the same time?
We're just building all three pieces at the same time. And we wouldn't sell lots in fifth, stage three, phase? No. Phase three and phase four until we've completed that. That was our intended phase in plan. And and is the right way to do it. All right, so so that's not in the agreement right now, but you would be okay with that? And I don't want to speak for your word, as I know your fees are. I'll pick my hands on it. But you would be okay with putting that into this agreement? I want to make sure the wording is correct, the principle is correct. That was the intent.
So Ted, did, Leo, I mean, you and I spoke on the phone, um, excuse me. I understand the six million, how that would work, that seems reasonable if, of course, there's a view that two million dollars is a reasonable number, you know, um, you have a legally binding uh land development plan. So the only remaining piece from my side, just to make sure that the township is protected, is um you just informed us of one improvement that you know, you're where it lies in the phasing, this new phasing, which is not in the.
You never put new, I wanted you to put new soil in my plant. Why'd you put it back over here?
Uh. All right.
I have.
Um. It would be nice to just see, you know, I've read the two thousand five agreement, or you know, gone through it a little bit, just so I can understand. And I've seen all the public improvements, there's a lot there, but it's a huge project from beginning to end. It would just be good to know for those public improvements um at what point in your phases um does each of those happen? Um and then and just is that reasonable? I mean, you just said, we think it's reasonable that we wouldn't need this other entry until this many homes. Well, does he think that's reasonable? I just, I just want to protect ourselves. I I don't know that's a it sounds like you've already done it, so I just don't know if it's.
Similar on June eighteenth of twenty twenty-four that addressed it.
Okay, the fake, the public improvements in the phasing.
That's these outside improvements.
Uh huh.
For example, there's an improvement at.
Things are realigned, it's not like, is it just a realignment at Mount Nevo and?
I'll give you an example. There's, there's an improvement that talks about changing uh Shawnee Church Road and Mo- and Mozer's Knob Road.
Yeah.
There's nothing to do with stage one B.
Correct, I agree, I agree. It's not necessary.
To stage one B is what we're doing, which is the hollowed in perception.
Okay.
My, my memo explained. Another example, there's over seven hundred and fifty home, fewer homes than when that traffic study was done in nineteen eighty-eight, that's thirty-seven years ago. Okay, when the traffic study was done. So I can send you the June.
I, and I'm just, my, my only feeling is that I I believe you're probably right. I just if if John says, yes, the the order of those phases, the order of that public improvements is in line with the facing, that makes sense. For me, I feel like that's, we've done our legal due diligence. I, if you've already sent it, then maybe, John, you can review that. I can look forward, or if you put forward it to me again, that.
Letters last year.
Okay. I remember you sending something, I didn't realize that's what that was. Of course, I was a bit of a newbie.
And it's a long time.
Yeah, but I probably.
Running yourself.
Good. So anything else that needs to be resolved, it can just, I'll get you once, one second, go, anything else from?
No, there's a stormwater agreement, which we don't have any uh that I prepared, and there's no issues with other than some of the names. And again, the uh letter of credit is with Goldman Sachs Bank in New York. Uh so that would appear to be in order also. And it's a, the letter of credit that uh automatically review, renews unless ninety days before the expiration date. And here, the expiration date would be September twenty twenty-six, it might be October now because of the time we've had to look at this, but they would give us ninety days notice and say, we're gonna call in the letter, so if you're gonna call, you wanna call it in. Come to the bank and give your money. So that's, that's. One last thing, John hasn't had time to look at it. We just finished our plat- plan, we had a final review and discussion of county tax with Depp Storm. John just got it electronically, he may not have been open.
I opened it, but I, I I think I'm gonna be okay with it.
But it just hasn't been executed, and I don't even know procedurally, do I print big copies of it? How do they get signed? Give me the procedure.
I mean, we gotta sign what, like six?
Uh it'll depend on how many you want to keep originals, um so we can talk about that offline, or generally speaking, the township keeps one copy. You need one copy to report, um and then two copies for yourself.
We work electronically.
That, that works.
Zero could work if it's, I've got it electronic.
Yes, that works. We'll just need two copies uh for wet signatures, one that can be taken to the reporter deeds, and one that stays with the township.
We'll follow that.
All right. Oh, what Joanna asked then?
Um, yeah, Ted has said that he has acquired the permit from D E P for crossing of the wetlands or the.
The, the rest of the dam.
You have gotten that permit?
We, we have our M P D S permit. Should wear that if we have a joint one oh five permit also.
Three something?
The M P D S was renewed in twenty twenty-five, not twenty well in April, and it extended through twenty thirty. The joint one oh five permit was renewed in twenty twenty-one and is valid through twenty twenty-six. And we'll continue to renew it, said.
So twenty-six?
Yeah, they're in place.
Um and what about the H R P?
The H R P has been in progress.
For thirty-seven years?
It, no, that's not really true.
Okay, you just said there was the traffic study done thirty-seven years ago, but seven hundred less houses how were considered, but now, what has happened over the last thirty-seven years here on Hollow Road that you think that you're gonna get the H R P?
We already have our comments back from Penn Up.
And they're gonna give you an H R P? They are. Do you guys believe that?
We can't withhold that approval based on outside approval, either.
I need to believe it because I have to have it.
You do? And and so my other question was in uh phase one and two, how many homes do you think? Is that just the one cul-de-sac coming that'll go to Shawnee Valley?
There's, there's seventy-six townhouses and thirty-seven single family homes.
Seventy-six and thirty-seven in phases one and two, and they're all gonna use Shawnee Valley Drive?
Until the connection is made.
Um, I don't know if Robert is listening, but what does Shawnee Valley think about all that? Do they?
I'm meeting with their kind of.
Is Shawnee Valley gonna make all these people join their homeowners association? Because they're private roads, right? They're not township roads.
Yeah, that gets complicated, John.
So there's like a hundred people that are gonna be using Shawnee Valley Road. Uh those people are gonna commit it before you start constructing.
I mean, I looked into, it looks like they have right to that road as well.
We have an agreement agreement and a rich cost sharing agreement, so.
So they'll be paying into that as a.
Yeah, there's a.
And then how many homes do you have in phases three and four? Once you get your access to Hollow Road.
What's your concern?
I'm just asking, how many people are gonna be, you're saying there's seven phases, so you've got a hundred there. You said the whole phase one B is three hundred homes, so you've got a hundred in phases one and two of seven, so you've still got five phases.
Yeah. What's the question?
How many homes were in three and four, phases three and four?
Thirty-four townhouses. And I believe it was nineteen single family lots, but I have to go back to the phasing plan. It's it's seven phases. Both of what we're doing now, three hundred and sixty-one homes. There are thirty-three homes in the Sun Mountain side on Hollow Road, if we haven't uh set a schedule to.
And then the sewerage, I think that was my other question, that you're not coming straight down to Hollow Road to meet by the Goldsmith property. You're gonna go all the way down and and kind of cross?
No, the engineer.
To the sewerage?
No, the engineer is coming across and there's a mountain.
From from the cul-de-sac that you're.
From the far side.
The first. Okay.
If you picture Joan, Joanne, right? At the far side of the dam, where it goes into the trees right now, that's approximately where the sewer road come down to them and then connect across.
So where does it cut across like?
We're, we're working with uh U B and dam safety.
Because now that's all not man-walled, because anymore knows. Right, and they, okay, and then they're, are they gonna increase that, say it down there by anything?
They don't need to. Our plan, our project was they were going to a client capacity back in the nineties.
And how many happened since then, too?
Yeah. All right, true.
Absolutely. Okay, so again, the one road in and one road out for a hundred people, you think that's okay?
It's not up to me whether or not I think it's okay.
I've seen it.
You guys have to either approve it or not.
Well, we have to we have, and from my point of view, we have to ensure that the plan is implemented as it was approved, including the public improvements, which is why I'm focusing on, I want to know when all those public improvements are happening, and if they're going, if they're not gonna be done, that they'd be bonded. So that if he loses his head, that the township can build that.
So then you still have phases five, six, and seven.
Correct, which is why, again, I've asked for clarification on the list in stage one B of all the public improvements, and what is relevant to one, phase one and two. That means, in my view, that needs to be bonded. If it's relevant to phase one and two, it needs to be there. If it's not relevant to phase one and two, and it would never, I mean, will be required, then all all projects are phased to finance them. I know that that is a fact. It's just a question of we need to make sure that the public improvements are all there as it was agreed in two thousand and five, because as the judge said, it had to be.
Right, a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at this point today, I feel like obviously you're gonna have to get those details and then vote on it on the next one. Unless there's, I'll, I'll go to you in a second, Michael.
I want to make it a conditional book. Condition on Ron's language and arguing by the language.
Nah, I, I do think knowing all the, there's a long list of public improvements. We just need to know when they're gonna, gonna happen, and I, I personally need, I your engineer is obviously gonna is saying something that's, you know, gonna be in your favor or something that you want. I just want our, our engineer to be able to agree that, yes, you don't need to realign Mount Nevo, Bottom Milk Falls for this many homes, but you do for three hundred. So at what point that needs to have, I think that just needs to be there. And then I think you can all feel comfortable that we can give it the rubber stamp approval um at that point. I don't know that I mean, I don't think it will take time, and as I understand from John. I mean, I don't think it will take time, and as I understand from John, um, I know you're in a rush as it relates to some site work, and my understanding is you can start that. You don't need to wait for any, for anything to start knocking trees down.
You want me to start without posting the bond?
Well, I don't under, that's what you're proposing, which I'm not sure. My understanding is you're legally allowed to do that.
You, you can. The, they, the, the big difference between the two options. Is you can start, if you post the escrow to ensure that all the improvements are gonna be constructed, you post that escrow with the township. And the township has a warm fuzzy feeling that all those improvements can be constructed, you can start pulling foundation permits. Pretty much at the same time and get constructed, start constructing foundations. If you're not gonna guarantee the site improvements, then your option is, put them in before you pull your building permits. Um, and. Once the township sees that they're in, then they'll start issuing building permits. Most developers wanna start both somewhat simultaneously, which is why they enter into the developer's agreement. I've also had experience where developers were in a hurry to get started, they had to clean up some loose ends, and they. Started their, their construction and followed up with the developer's agreement, so. Long as Ron's comfortable with that, from an engineering standpoint, I'm okay with him.
You know, I can't go, hold building permits until we see that, right?
Right, correct.
Doesn't, doesn't slow you down, with Ron, kind of sad.
Alright, so my question is, if I'm understanding everything correctly, okay, so if we start, Ted starts phases one and two. It's required, it's approved in the two thousand and five plan, and once had a second ingress and egress, that has to be done at some point. His plan is to do it after he puts in the homes in phases one and two, is that correct, Ted?
Yeah, so. instantaneous as three and four, as we just said.
Yeah, so he doesn't have a high rate occupancy permit, I think I heard you say that you're not required to have that upfront or something? That you can start without it, except.
We, we can't withhold uh, uh, approval based on outside approvals.
Right, but, okay, so I guess what I'm wondering is, let's say one and two are done, it comes to the improvement part. Can't get that high rate occupancy permit, that's at the point he would need it, correct?
Yeah.
When he starts those road improvements, yes, John, I'm, I'm understanding? So let's say he can't get it, and he decides to bail it in, but phases one and two are in, and now you need a second ingress and egress. Like, what would happen in that scenario?
We have two million dollars in a bond that we can call a bond in and build a bridge ourselves, including finishing the permit. Assuming that that number is okay, and we're saying two million, John would like to have a little bit more information to determine if. Two million is fair.
Finishes the road improvements.
Yeah, that's with the bond.
Correct.
Developer walks away.
Yeah.
So you have those homes, but the second ingress and egress is built with the bond that he posts.
Correct. In fact, it should be all public improvements bonded as you need them, right? It's gonna be more than that for phase three and four.
Right.
It's gonna be more public improvements, I just wanna see that list of public improvements when they fall, at which phase. Because I've got a full list in my stage one B document, they're not all in phase one, two, understandably, because they're not all needed yet. So I just want him to provide it, and him to say, yes, that's appropriate.
I mean, it's usual, but I'm wondering if anyone else from the township has been involved in any of the PND meetings on this project?
I haven't. Well, I have not.
I'm just curious what's actually going down, I mean, you've been saying for a while that you're getting this, this permit, and they just can't, they pay time.
Waiting for things like this.
Yeah, I understand, but that's a very important part, is to have.
Yeah, I'm not, not worried about it.
And what if he doesn't get it? What does it matter if you have two million or four million to do the bridge, if you don't have the permit to get on Hollow?
I, I, I've asked this question too, and I understand legally, we can't withhold.
With that end. Because Hollow Road is not safe. I mean, they should do it.
I, I agree, I agree with you.
Which we're not up to, I see that.
I agree with you, I just, I know, I know.
Well, yeah, and then we're, you know.
Joanne, when you work at Pendot, they require you to do traffic studies, they require you to do traffic counts, they calculate the new home generation. It's a scientific engineering process, it's not just, I'd like to do it.
No, but they.
They are doing it, but a part of what we're doing, finishing it, we have to redo it, if we waited, they last three years.
And I have somebody passing me right by the, the lake the other day. It is ridiculous. I was like, three back, and the guy behind me pulled and passed all three of us. I mean, it's thirty, thirty-five through there.
Alright.
Let's get free.
Alright, well, I can easily make that language change tomorrow and send it to Mr. Peters, so he can look at it, so I can get that done quick.
Can, can you get that document, that twenty twenty fourth, you said you already sent? For John to review and just make sure that the, the phasing of the public improvement makes sense?
And if you have the, the plans that you got, your, uh, joint one oh five permit.
John had.
Then I could redo those.
You wanna see the whole joint one oh five package? It's enormous.
No, just a point, you had, you had a plan.
The PCSM plan, and there's, there's a little package of joint one oh five string processing details, that's it.
Well, those are the details I'd wanted to say, the stream processing detail. I don't need to sit down for videos, I know the damage.
That's, that's right.
Thanks. What's other comments directed toward the board?
Oh, we hit a comment.
Um, is this uh, area zone for this, like, uh, is it an R one area? I heard him mention townhouses, thirty four townhouses.
It's, it's in what's called PRDs, it's private residential development, that has its own whole set of zoning.
Kind of like us, at Mount Manor?
That's not a PRD, no. It was, there was a PRD that was applied once, but didn't go forward.
Okay, so.
It's usually.
Just, so, if it's a PRD, it can fit in the R one zone?
PRDs, are they conditional use in R one?
They are conditional use in an R one zone, and they are different in the municipality's planning code.
Okay, I don't know, I just, I feel like the zoning maps are a little wonky and need to be redone.
In the zoning map, if you see the lines like this, that's, those are PRDs.
Yeah, PRD is separate from the zoning, they have to be identified on the zoning map, but they are not a zone itself.
It's a use, it's weird.
So it's more kind of, kind of like a spot zone, but not calling it a spot zone?
No, it's more like, cause it's gotta be a large area, it's more like mini villages within areas, so you, allows you to have like. A restaurant next to a, a home theoretically.
Similar to a resort.
Sort of, um, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's typically whenever you're doing a private residence, such as HOAs are all PRDs most of the, anyway, sorry.
I don't know, just seems crazy that that can exist in R one, and it's just labeled under something else. And certain things that are labeled under R one, you can throw out when you don't agree with it.
I, I just have a quick question, uh, the stormwater runoff, i- is that maintained on your own property, or are you discharged in that template's head?
We comply with the, uh, the DDP regulations where we have to hold the stormwater. And calculate so that it doesn't increase the downstream flow, we have to, we have to.
Okay, and then it doesn't affect uh, neighboring homes that are not in the PRD?
Right.
Our stormwater.
And if it does, what is the resolution to fix that, if it does uh, disturb someone else?
It would be eligible for relief under the Stormwater Management Act.
Okay.
But our ordinance is stronger than DEP's standards alone.
Okay, I'm just, you know, curious if it affects someone else.
Yeah.
And they have the right to sue? Alright. Beg on your business, uh, the contracts with the SYA FC Pocono, he's tried to regula- little league. Michael, I know you've been working on that, you wanted to kind of throw some stuff out there.
Yeah, I know we have, uh, the SYAs here, and this was, I wanted this on the agenda mostly as a discussion point, not necessarily to consider. Cause they have not agreed to anything, and neither has anyone else, um. As in, neither has FC Pocono or, um, Little League, um, but this was just that. Um, all of these contracts needed to be updated and adjusted, and my recommendation is, we're. Right now, everyone's been there this year without paying uh, rent or anything, or any use agreement. Um, and I'm keen to get something, I've just run off for the one year through twenty twenty five. I'm taking care of, and then, because of some of the discussions have taken a little bit longer than I'd hoped, so. Just hoping to basic, effectively extend just the exact same amount that's been paid in the past, um, for twenty twenty five, um. But I think the document that is in front of you is, still has a few things that need to be edited, so I'm probably rather table. During this, I don't know if this way wants to say anything while we're here, or, um, we just have another meeting later on.
My, I'm just wondering, cause I had seen it on the agenda, I'm just wondering where we at, cause we do have to get together to update that, that contract.
Yeah, I think that's, and, and I basically think how to come up with Alex has said, let's just, we're, I mean, we're now in October. Um, let's just do a one year real quick, and then.
As we, as we have in the past.
For the same amount, the same amount of money, exact, exact same.
So, so we're talking the three-way split then, just like we did the last time?
I think it was fifteen hundred dollars for a SYA.
Yeah.
And it was, it was two plus porta potties for FC, and it was, um. I think, um, Little League pays for all maintenance for their facility, and they're charged a dollar or something like that. I mean, it was just to formalize those contracts too, just so like, there wasn't really a contract with Little League. It was, oh, they get to maintain it, so we're like, well, we should have a contract, and it should be one dollar. And they should be required to, should be written that they're required to, so those are all three things we wanna get in place. For the interview.
Okay. Basically just a proven that we've been paying.
Correct, that way it gives the supplies a little bit more time to work out than the lost details. So, uh, unless, unless you guys, I wanted to see if you guys had any questions on that approach for, we may look at this draft and then.
Do a good job, so, like, to see if they get. Buttoned up.
I know Robert had looked at this before, Robert, is that okay with you? Oh, he may have, oh, he's there.
Yeah.
He said, okay, then he was gonna have, oh, he's here, alright.
Well, we'll have that, maybe at our next meeting, maybe not, that's okay, we don't have.
All, well, all we'll all does, I'll send this version, which is really just basic, it's just the stem out, you get to use these fields, these ones, that's it, and then. We'll get the more nuanced one that provides incentives based on a history of, of contributions on the SYA. Um, next year.
With that, we'll do public comment.
I think there's a few people online that wanna start.
Oh, Norm has hands, so I'm gonna go with Norm first.
Yep, they are went down here on, uh, the pretty serious this project. We'd like to see our highway get done, we'll just get both of them.
Hi, the timer has a fun noise, um, you're talking about two and I? Yeah, they've been having meetings with Pendot, so we're hoping in, in the next couple of weeks to know when they're going to release the money for the.
It's been funded.
Bid for the next construction season.
Oh, we got those two all there.
It's not gonna happen in the fall, yeah.
No, we push as hard as we could with Pendot, but.
I'm a contractor, so I know it's not gonna happen now, but.
Yeah.
Uh, it's really rough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I'll take you for a ride in my dump truck someday.
Thank you.
It's not too much of a public debate.
I guess I'll go. Zach Plucktozki, one oh nine clubhouse court, East Stroudburn, PA. Um, I know people really like to trespass up, or from the township, I had another one this week. In the township truck, blatantly just trespassing through Mountain Manor yet again. I confronted him, he knew he was trespassing. Uh, in Smithfield Township truck, uh, he was looking for water. In case there was another fire, and then he was looking at the, um. Fire that we had occurred in Mountain Manor, um, said he was there on behalf of the fire department, so. A little confused as to who he was there in regards to. But, um, another thing that I have to remind you guys about that. Mountain Manor's private, private roads, not a cut through. Um, also, uh, another guy from Land Pike Township, and came flying through the other day. No lights on, no emergency, when he was confronted, he was just told, uh, that he was just cutting through. Just cutting through, everyone's just cutting through. Uh, yesterday, state line asphalt cut through. Um, and just, everyone's just cutting through Mountain Manor, uh. And trespassing, especially when we have an active lawsuit with you guys, you guys should especially make it well know that. Smithfield Township is not there, whether it be these people here trespassing. Uh, whether it's Robert trespassing and throwing our stuff on the ground, there seems to be a big trespassing issue, and it's not us. It's not our fault, your guys' fault, I have a lot of signs, probably about four hundred and fifty of them. I know it's convenient for people to cut through, and they miss a couple stoplights and traffic lights. But they're all private roads, I have to patch the potholes, I plow them. I have to repair the traffic, uh, the traffic signs when they're hit. I have to repair the power lines when we have eighteen wheelers come through and rip them down, we pay for all that. Uh, I would like you guys to do what you can to stop it, um, the state police do what they can. But why am I tying them up with simple trespassing things? It's kind of, kind of ridiculous. Um, I call a lot of people cutting through, um, so maybe you guys wanna do something to make it known? That, that's not a cut through, uh, cause we've done our part, uh. And I, I really think that we need to just keep, keep, uh. You guys need to keep your hands clean and stay out of there, uh, whether it's in regards to that, uh. I don't have a problem with, you know, anyone cutting through from any type of emergency service, if there's an emergency.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a cut through, so, and make it known that, and make sure you make note to everyone that works with you guys. That it's not a cut through.
Thanks.
Next.
Go ahead, Oliver. You think that, you wanna go up, you wanna do it again, you wanna do it yourself, that's nice, yeah.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Hold on one second, sir, I have someone in person.
I ain't, I ain't back nine, be open be, and one, I ain't right there, and one my dog.
Right.
That it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Oliver.
Thank you.
Job, boy.
Hello, hello, can you all hear me?
Nah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I'm, um, my name's Dana Cottrell, I'm here, um, to advocate and be a voice for the back nine. Um, just kinda give you a little brief history about myself, I, I, I live down in the Philadelphia area, um, been down here for about twenty plus years. Um, just got a little bit of background in terms of, you know, where I come from and, and what I'm about. Um, I'm from the, the New England area, um, I'm fifty one year old, so I'm, I'm not a, a young kid, uh, but I, I, I do have a very, very strong passion. For motocross, um, I, I attended Syracuse University, graduated there in nineteen ninety six, was a four-year starter at linebacker there. And went on to play a few years in the NFL, uh, for the New England Patriots. Uh, from there, I went on, uh, and currently am in the finance industry for the last twenty years. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is to advocate for the back nine, for the Byrne family, and for Zach. Uh, you know, just kind of thinking about three pillars of, 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 you know, what, what, what's meaningful to me, family, life, and community. Starting with family, um, I don't think I have to tell you too much about the Byrne family or Zach. All, 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 all you need to do is be around them for a short period of time, and you'll fully understand that they are the realest, truest human beings. That, that will give you their shirts off their backs. Take a moment to speak to their children, Grant, Grant and Hud- Hudson, as I call them, G-Man and Huddy. They're two of the nicest kids I have ever met in life. Every other human being that crosses their path would say the same, I challenge anybody who, who, who challenges that. They're good-hearted, good-spirited people with passion and love for a particular sport. That many take seriously in, in motocross and dirt bike riding. Similar to baseball, soccer, lacrosse, golf, football, hunting, as well as many other sports. Whether you're just riding for fun, stress relief, fitness, or training as a professional rider, the family. The family at the Back Nine has been accommodative to folks at all levels of this sport. And they do it the right, and they do it the right way, why would anyone want to take this away from a community? Second pillar, life, there are so many young men and women and ladies that need an outlet for many different reasons. There are some that come from broken homes, stressed situations within their communities, have self-esteem issues, anxiety, stress. Some suffer from mental strain, the list can go on and on. This does not pertain to young men and women, this does not just pertain to young men and women, but adults as well. We as people from all walks of life. Need outlets, we need community, we need these outlets to help us manage the things I mentioned. Without sports in my life, I'm not sure where I would be. I know for many, I know many others can attest to that, and that's real talk. Think about how meaningful it is for a child and their parent to go out and do something they love together, outside, away from social media. Away from the different stresses that we all face in life and be able to share a passion and communion with others. If you're not around motocross, you have no idea what it actually means to go, that what goes on at the track. I see and experience many of these things myself. These are the things, these are the very things I want to make sure I teach my six-year-old and my twelve-year-old daughter, things like helping others, learning how to compete. Sorry, my phone, sorry, sorry, my phone is ringing.
Well, that, man, that was our timer, thank you.
He can keep talking.
No way, no, no way, it was three minutes.
It was three.
No, no, keep going, Danny.
Hold on, we're not.
I say you let him keep going.
Yeah. If you're going to disrupt the meeting, you're going to be escorted out, okay, prove it.
Sir, if you don't mind, it'll take me fif- fifteen more seconds.
Okay, Mr. Cottrell, finish your fifteen seconds.
Thank you, in this day and age, in this day and age, the voice of one should never have an influence over the voice of many. There are, there has been a blind eye to race, gender, economic status and motocross, motocross does not care. Who you are, as long as you're a good person. And and good to others, the community in a nutshell, that's the community in a nutshell, we ride for one another. I am my brothers and sisters' keepers, guilty by association, I like to say, this is what you get at the track. What you get at the Back Nine facility, this is what you get from Mike, Elisa, Huddy, G, Zach and the Back Nine family. It would be shameful to make a decision that affects all based on a few. The majority should be more powerful and politics should be should be set aside, I would not waste your time if I didn't believe in what these folks are doing. To make a difference and and to and to better people's lives. I, in close, in closing, I truly thank you for your time as it is something we we will never get back. We never can get more or less of this of of time, don't waste more of it, free the Back Nine, be blessed, thank you.
My name is Gordon Mason, I live at one seventeen clubhouse court, which is right on Mount Manor. Of course, um I've been there for going on seven years. When uh I first heard about the track being opened up, I was a little skeptical, but I gotta tell you, I live. About three hundred yards from the track. The noise is minimal, these people have gone out of their way, build walls that are higher than the ceiling. To do anything possible, not start till ten, close early, only do three days a week, they've done, they've done everything, they've given and given and given. You guys approved this in the beginning and then you took it away. It wasn't proved in the beginning, they went through the right channels and everyone was told yes. Well, I I mean, what do you do, tell your children yes and one of the other kids says complains about it and then you change your mind? The amount of complaints is minimal, noise is not the violation, it's their attitude and they want to make money off it. It's ridiculous, these people go out of their way to help everybody else in this community. Um, all I see now is kids riding on the streets, is that what you really want? I mean, look at the safety factor, this is ridiculous, you all should be ashamed of yourself and let this go through, thanks.
Thank you. I'm tired, I don't even want to be here right now, but I'll continue to keep coming when my fellow Americans are losing freedoms like this. Jacob, you really need to stop worrying about your campaign and fixing what's wrong here, you should apologize for Vanessa walking out and that was absolute cowardice and disgusting. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Zach DiPaolo, I'm a professional freestyle motocross rider for fourteen years. I rode in thirteen countries, forty-six states, uh the guys over at Back Nine are doing an excellent job. At showing these kids uh what it's like to work hard, what it's like to be courageous, what it's like. Uh, now to stand up for what is right, um Camp Dora Golden, right down the street from there, has hired me multiple times. Uh, they liked us so much, they asked us to do extra shows, we were scheduled for three, we wound up doing six. Um, so I don't understand how it's any different, uh you know, it's the exact same type of motorcycles. Uh, it's just amateurs and and children trying to uh, you know, have some fun and uh. I think it's really important that these kids have a place um. To have their passion and and be with their family, um and I don't see how it's any different. When Camp Dora Golden hires us literally a mile down the street to do the same thing, it's okay then. So uh I just ask that you um, you know, uphold the constitution, give people freedom to do what they want on their own land. And uh what they're doing is good, they're training kids to um develop. Discipline early on in life, keeping them off drugs, keeping them off the streets, um. And yeah, Zach's good people, I love the Back Nine, I've been there, it's a great facility, we're going.
End of the cross talk.
Sorry about that. Go ahead, Zach, you have time.
So, yeah, I just, you know, I've seen a lot of sports, I've met a lot of people all around the world. Um, the motocross community is real, these are people that go every weekend. They spend time with their children, they're working on the motorcycles, they're learning how to be mechanics, they're learning how to. Um, you know, work out in the gym, keep themselves physically fit, it's a full spectrum sport, it's a lifestyle. Okay, like this is a big deal for these families, these people need a place to, you know, do their passion. The, and I don't understand how they can hire me to come ride right down the street and it's okay then. But then all of a sudden, it's a problem when it's children. Just trying to enjoy their time with their family on the track, that's not okay, if it's okay for me to come ride at Camp Dora every year. And and put on an excellent show where they're actually begging for extra performances all throughout the day and night. Then it, then that speaks for itself, okay? Bravery and and learning how to combat fear is very important, and that's what motocross is teaching these children. And that's what I've been taught, and that's why I am equipped in life now, I've started my own business, I I have all kinds of things. I'm doing and motocross is the reason that I have the strength uh to carry on and and, you know, be successful in life. Um. Back Nine is a great group of people, they're do, they're running it great, they care about their community. Um, I'm just asking that you work with these guys, you know, th- these are good people. Please understand that and please understand the people's passion, it it's uh something that isn't to be messed with, you know?
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
I just want to ask you where, I I don't know where Camp Dorkel is, but.
It's a mile down the street from that facility.
Camp between us and your friend Joe Vaughn's campsite, it's literally, it's a mile down the road and there's no permits required. They hold motocross, they have a go-kart track which they got no permits for, they have a full beautiful go-kart track which no one cares about because. Tammy Booth didn't complain, they host free.
Public comment.
No, it's not my public comment, I'm answering the question from Michael.
Michael's question.
But you could interrupt me again, but let me answer his question, Camp Dora Golding is located one mile up the road. So some of the traffic that's complained about, we have less than forty riders three days a week. They have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people that generates traffic like this gentleman was talking about. This man, who we hadn't met yet, this accomplished, talented human, is paid to do what we can't do. One mile up the road and you guys didn't even know about it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you for asking.
And and yeah, I have rode there multiple times and honestly, they're nice people, they really uh, they were respectful. Um, they paid us well and it was an all-boys and then an all-girls thing. Um, so I've rode there multiple times, um and they loved it, you know what I mean? And those kids were taught that day about courage and and following your dreams, like I'm a living example of someone who has followed my dreams. And now I've gotten to travel the world, thirteen countries, forty-six states. And I get to inspire kids all over the world to follow their dreams, I think that's really important and I know this rings with truth. I know this rings with truth with you.
We're not gonna duplicate, thank you.
Thank you for your time, please consider the Back Nine family to be a good people, they really are. Show them some love and support.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll take the next one if there's a spot.
Jared, we got someone standing in front, give us one second.
Okay, no problem.
Alright, so my name is Derek Thorson, I'm from Neutralia, Pennsylvania, I'm roughly like an hour fifteen from here. I have known each and one of these people my entire life. Um, I do know that motocross is the best thing for kids, like Philly, there's no motocross tracks in there, what do you have? Street bikes racing, you have traffic incidents, deaths. I know Promise Lands all the way in West Virginia, it's a small area, no one really goes there, they make three times the amount of revenue on the weekends. They have motocross races, three times the amount when they have motocross races. So if you're worried about revenue, instead of having a tabloid say twenty-eight bundles of heroin found during a local traffic stop in Smithfield Township. Monroe County, maybe you'll have critics come to see a motocross race this weekend, we have professional riders, we have kids. Coming out of school, training, learning how to get along with their parents better as a community, not twenty-eight bundles of heroin. Found in Smith Township, I really don't think you guys want that as your presentation, I mean. Zach is friends with Travis Pastrana, Nitro Circus, that would bring a very positive name to this, I mean, the guy is known worldwide. He goes to Germany, goes all over, Travis Pastrana is a very popular man. Rather, twenty-eight bundles of heroin found during traffic stop in Smithfield Township on nine nineteen two thousand twenty-five, not a good look. I would rather have my kids know they're going to a safe township where it's publicized, motocross, family. Sports, athletic, these kids aren't going to be on the streets doing dumb things, they're going to be at a track with safe people. Safe riding, building a future to get to his level where they can travel the world without having to do it a dirty street way. These are some of the best people and I know you've seen some sides of Zach and some sides of people here you don't like, because they are extremely. Passionate about helping children, we have a rider in our family. Whose parent is going through an extreme tough surgery soon and these people have taken him in, like he is family and blood. They are great people, they are very passionate about what they believe and where they stand. Now, I can um, I do know a couple realtors, um some like industrial corporations that would buy their land from a heartbeat. You know, some traffic tractor trailers, some traffic, maybe a mobile home park. I know I love, I know the mobile home parks love fireworks, there's one about twenty miles from me, biggest show you can see about a hundred miles away. Um, but maybe we could sell the land and and bring tractor trailers in, since everyone's worried about like traffic and noise. Or we could have a family safe place for kids to ride, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys ready? Okay, um so, hey, uh my name's Jared Stoner, I'm from Lewis Ferry, Pennsylvania, I'm about ten or fifteen minutes. South of Harrisburg, um so a little bit about me is I've I've ridden and raced motorcycles my entire life. I had the opportunity to race professionally for a couple years, travel in the country and um. We we need to keep these tracks open, um looking back on my life, I've 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 now gone on to. Um, start a couple businesses and I think that that drive and dedication from learning. All the the skills from riding and racing has led to my success now as most guys who um. Go to the races, like a lot of us are self-employed, a lot of us, we. We travel on the weekends and during the week to ride motorcycles because we want to, you know, it's a disposable income. And we go, hey, we're gonna go, not only go to these places to ride. To, but we also will will go get gas at the local station, we'll go eat at the diners, we'll go, we'll go. We don't just spend money there, you know, I don't go ride for the day with my buddies just to go to the track and come home, you know, we're always like. Hey, let's go grab a bite to eat, we have a couple places that we we go to just to know that we're gonna get a good meal afterwards, so. Not only is having the Back Nine open i- in you guys' area, because I think the closest track from you guys is like two hours away. So not only will it help the community, but also. Uh, the motorcycle community, but it will also help the local community that you guys have, you know, I'm sure you have a lot of people that have. Um, mom and pop restaurants and grocery stores and things like that, and I I think if they. Unfortunately, the Back Nine wasn't open initially long enough for the community to to see the impact that it has. From outsiders coming in, enjoying the Back Nine, but then also going out of their way to help support all the local businesses, so. Um, I really hope you guys can get this resolved soon, I know it's been going on for a long time and um I I think. I think it's just time to, there there's owned a resort, let it be a resort and I think within eighteen to twenty-four months. The, of them being open, the the local community would be really happy that 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 finally happened, so. Thanks again for your time and uh, yeah, my name's Jared.
Thank you.
I'm uh Patrick Cody Hogan, I have a video that I'd like to open once and show you guys, that's okay, I don't know how.
In what, in what way?
On my phone.
I mean, we're open to play it from there, but we're not gonna put it on the screen, I think.
Okay. Well. Are you playing it in the center? Okay, so. This is a video of my son, I bought him a dirt bike today, I know you guys. Probably never had one or know what it's like or the pain, the emotion that's involved in it. But we greeted him when he got twelve dogs. And with this brand new Gap ass eighty-five, and I mean, he's dying to come to the Back Nine, he wants to. You know, this is something very important to us and our family and um him. I mean, so Jacob, I know you graduated from me Stroudsburg University, I also did. Um, you know, um unfortunately, you know, that kind of sent me to a few rough years. Um, of my life, I'm sure you're, well, you know, all about the community and the heroin epidemic. That is plagued it, um. You know, but. The one thing that has always been solid in my life is dirt bikes, it's this little, you know, two wheels with this little stupid motor makes some noise. But um it can pull people out of the darkest places and um I'd really. You know, wish you could consider just the weight that that carries in our families and our loved ones. And, you know, it it's a saving grace in a lot of ways, um and I just really think that uh. You know, it would be great if you could. Respect what they got going on, you know, you went to East Stroudsburg, you, this is where you make your money, I personally. I'm here for no other reason than to support what is good for all of us. But, you know, I have a brand-new baby at home, I should be home with him, I should be home with my son, I should have went to his basketball game. But now I'm here because this is, this is what it's all about, this is like some really special stuff. Okay, and I just really would wish that you guys could come to some kind of resolution here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jeremy, I'm coming down south in about an hour and a half away, um. Okay, uh C A B, so I live about an hour and a half away, I I ride locally, I don't race. Uh, I got two kids, they're five and uh uh five and eight and they good ride as well, um. With uh like, I just wanted to kind of paint the picture of like what it is for like my family on the weekend, so we have, you know, a small toy hauler, twenty-five foot trailer. And a fifteen-hundred pickup, right, so like a lot of times during the week, um you know, Wednesday, Thursday, I'll get my kids' stuff ready, get the riding gear ready, whatever else. My big, um pack it up, Friday we get home, uh you know, kid, you're home from school, whatever, we'll drive. Um, pack it up. Friday we get home, uh, you know, kid, you're home from school, whatever. We'll drive out to a track. Lately, it's been a couple hours west every near like Corbella's and whatever else, because there's not too much available anymore. Um, but hey, we'll camp out Friday, get up Saturday, you know, my wife comes with me, we'll cook, make breakfast, like, like, I don't know, there, there's just a picture of like, we really like, we kind of come and camp. We just hang out, spend time with the family. Um, obviously, you know, it's really good time to spend with the kids and then along with the other families, the kids mingle, you know? So like at nighttime, everything's great, uh, if you can do the whole camping thing. I don't know what Back Nine is gonna be able to do or not, but I just wanna paint the picture of like, you know, what would be ideal. Um, but hey, come in, camp out, ride during the day at the tent before. Alright, so you have a six-hour period of, you know, of riding. Outside of that, you're right back to it, you know, like hey, they're gonna clean up the track at night. Kids are gonna go mingle around, get showered up if they got RVs. If not, you know, day trippers are gonna go home. But I, you know, I just wanted to paint that picture. Like that's what it is for us a lot of times, uh, you know, it's a really peaceful weekend. It's like a quick trip away for, you know, a day and a half, two days, depending, you know? That's how it is for me. Um, but I, you know, I, like, I kind of do like, I just wanted to do, like, you know, paint the picture of like what it is for me, um, again, and, and then also just address the fact that like, I do feel like, um, motocross has been kind of politicized a lot. It, it does kind of frustrate me. Um, I know we get bad images from, for lack of better words, the morons in the cities, uh, you know, like running the, like, the, oh, the ride outs or whatever the hell they're called. Um, so I, I hate that stuff as well. Um, but like the crew that you'd be bringing to an actual motocross track is like, there's a lot, I mean, I hate to like gauge it with money, but there's a lot of money there. You got a lot of hardworking people, business owners. I, I just work Monday through Friday as, as does my wife, right? Um, but it, it, it's pretty much it. There's just a lot more family involvement than I think you guys are realizing. Um, and I wanted to kind of address, uh, along with that, that um, something I've noticed since I've been watching like the construction talk, uh, in the beginning, I, I've never been, this is actually my second, um, town meeting ever, so, uh, and I'm not from here, so. But I, I'm watching this and like you guys are honestly, all of you are up and sitting like this guy's sitting on his phone, Tressler, I don't know who you are and I don't, you know, like, I'm not attacking or anything like that. I don't know your role, but like he's on his phone. He's kind of writing, like you guys are kind of swapped back a little bit.
I'm on my phone because I am reviewing the letter that we talked about earlier this evening, which is.
Totally okay. I guess I, I, I don't mean it as an attack. Yeah, so.
No cross talk. An engineering related matter. What I'm reviewing is engineering related matter.
When I'm having cross talk, please.
Sir John, I, I just, I, I, it wasn't a personal attack. I, again, I don't know your role. Um, but what I'm just noticing across the board is, and it's something that I wish you guys are just like reconsidering the day, is that like you guys are up and in your chairs and engaged for like the construction talk. But I gotta be honest, as soon as, uh, people started talking about the track, you guys kind of fell off a little bit and like.
When they comment to their all.
No, and I, I saw your writing. It's just, it's, it's the motions and the attitude, like I, I, I just felt the energy in the room change. And again, from somebody, like I have zero affiliations with them. I got to ride the track one time when it was open and I was excited for it. Um, I would just say is that like, you know, the sport unfortunately does get bad attention and I think that this is like, this is how you fix it. So again, I'm coming from down south, just wanted to kind of come up and give my support.
Thanks. Thank you.
How's it going? Uh, my name is Ian Kieran. I'm owner, operator of Alumina Max Training and I recently taken on the A seven motocross school, which is a memorial school, um, founded for a very close member of our family, Austin, um. I just want to come up and say I have been training the boys for three years now, um. My job now, after my eighteen years of racing, climbed to the amateur ranks, into the pro ranks, did the whole, the whole thing, um. My job now is to build athletes and without the facility at our disposal, it has taken a toll on the level of which we can, we can pull the, sorry, the talent and the speed we can pull out of these guys. We are functioning at a very high level and without the constant concreting of technique and, and the endurance work, it really makes a pull on these guys. Um, they are they, without again, without the constant concreting of the skills, it is putting them at a higher risk without the concrete and technique and everything. Um, not just these guys, but I have kids that are five years old, all the way up to older gentlemen that are sixty. We my goal is to build top priority racers. And again, without the facility, it takes away a huge element for them. Um, again, too, I have developed a good relationship with a lot of my students. Um, I have younger kids who have learning disabilities. They come ride and I get texts from the parents about the next day at school. They're writing and they're doing what they have to do about the day they had before because, again, they're engaged. This is where a lot of these kids, this is their outlet. And to steal that outlet away from them is very unfair. It's like taking, taking football away from somebody or taking soccer away from somebody. They need this. They need this in their life to continue. I don't want to help to help them function and become better people. This isn't just about riding dirt bikes. This is about building good people and that is what we have around us is very good caring people and again, we hope, we hope we can do something. We, we, we would love a change.
Thank you. Thank you.
Will I have a chance to jump in here?
Sure. Can you say your name just so we have it?
My name's Vinnie Arreste. I live in Long Island, New York, but I own a track in Delaware. So I've been on both sides of this and I understand that it's not easy to come to an agreement with, with, when things get complicated. I think the Back Nine and the crew, they're, you know, they're fantastic. They're awesome people. They're trying to do a really good thing here. It's obviously a healthy thing like people have mentioned. They've made huge concessions to try to come your way. They've gone more than to the center. They're, they're, they're way off to one side towards you guys trying to make this work. Um, and it's, it's a healthy thing. I think they should, you know, we gotta come to an agreement. What I just watched in the, in the meeting with the construction job and the HOA, you guys are dealing with way more complicated stuff than this. I'm surprised that this is still going. I'm blown away that this just, just get it done, get it off, get it off your plate. This seems like a really, it seems like a home run to make this happen. The only reason I even go to East Stroudsburg is to ride at Back Nine and I bring my family there and I, and I go to the businesses there. And I'd love to have it back. I wanna go. I wanna, you know, be part of that family again. It's just, you know, it's thanks to see it, is to see it sit idle. It's a really good place and, uh, I hope you guys can come to an agreement. And appreciate your time.
Thank you. Two hands by the way. I can't see your last word, Dylan.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you for your undivided attention, counsel. Uh, my name is Chris Dillon, owner and operator of Rapid Aerial Solutions. We provide a lot of different aerial filming and, uh, media reconnaissance for, uh, multi-craft, ro- multi-rotor craft, single rotor craft, um, as well as, uh, uh, mini copters. Um, what we do, uh, at Rapid Aerial Solutions is provide a service for families uh, for their children to be able to see videos of their children, uh, riding around the track. Um, we, the, the biggest thing that we do is we, we operate under several different commercial licenses. Part ninety-one, part one oh seven for drones, uh, part one thirty-five for, uh, single rotor craft, uh, helicopter filming for large events. Uh, one thing I would like to say is, uh, as a client of Back Nine, I've seen a video, um, that was publicly posted by Tom Ricabono. Um, he claimed, uh, in comments on YouTube that he was hired to film over Back Nine. Um, when you have people who are non-participants to a commercial drone filming, um, this is, uh, can lead up to a twenty-seven thousand dollar fine or three years in jail. Uh, what we do at Rapid Aerial Solutions is make sure everyone who's being filmed is alerted by the filming crew, all pilots, all media personnel and the owners of the area that you will be filmed by a drone over two hundred and fifty grams. Um, it's very easy to tell from the video that was posted, uh, publicly online and told that it was a commercial drone shoot, um, was well over, uh, two hundred and fifty grams. I personally hand-built drones along with, uh, people, uh, in my company. Um, the footage that was produced came from a drone that was well over eight hundred grams. And the amount of people that they are flying over increases these penal penalties. So if no one understands they are part of a commercial drone shoot, um, this is very easy for the FAA to come in and claim, uh, they have the ability to uh, federally prosecute Tom Ricabono. Um, and as I said, twenty-seven thousand dollars, three years in jail, um, without anyone's knowledge, um, th- this is very unhelpful for the community. Um, could there, could this be happening in other situations? Um, are they flying over other campgrounds, inspecting, uh, children, adults? Um, it's also very unsafe when me as a company who is contracted by Back Nine is flying over these facilities and another drone is flying over, um, there can be cross blending of frequencies. And this can interfere with my ability to safely fly a drone if I do not know someone else is commercially being paid to fly over. Um, the, the drone video that we has been publicly posted, I'm sure that you guys have all seen this. Um, it's very easy to tell that the audio has been altered. Um, we do a lot of audio altering, um, in, to increase views mainly with music, but we do not add microphone footage that was ground-based or, um, alternately, uh, recorded from that drone. Um, so there, there's a lot of things that I see incorrect from what you as a council may have seen from this video. Um, thi- this is all something that you should very highly consider, um, as not plausible in any sort of lawsuit. Um, it's very easy for this to, to be admitted.
We're gonna move on to the next topic.
Thank you for your time.
God, birds. Yes.
Hey, guys, um, I currently live in Tonopah, Arizona. I born and raised in Southern California. The, uh, motocross capital of the world, pretty much. Um, I've been riding my whole life. I've, you know, growing up as a kid, one of my favorite tracks got closed down. And it was the closest track to me. We didn't have much money, so, you know? We didn't, I didn't get to go ride. I didn't go get to spend quality time with my dad and my sister. Um, you know? Because we didn't have the money to go to the track that was two hours away. Um, out here in Arizona, multiple tracks are getting closed down and we're all fighting for it. Um, it helped me, uh, build a, build a life. I grew up riding my bike till I broke it and learning how to fix it. It worked with my hands. Uh, I was too busy working on bikes and riding them to get into trouble as a kid. And I grew up to get into trade where I worked with my hands every day. Um, it taught me about working for what you want and, you know, kept me out of trouble. I had a lot of friends that didn't have motocross and that ended up going down bad paths and aren't doing that great today. Um, I just, I have friends out by you guys and I have family out there and it just breaks my heart seeing something like this where a track tries to get closed down, because I think about when I was a kid, how much it hurt me and my family and, you know, as an adult riding, every time I go to the track, me and the boys go get lunch after, you know, on the way in, we stock up our ice chests with whatever local convenience stores closest to the track. Um, you know, it's, it's just really sad to see something like this going down for no good reason, you know? Um, I just, I, I owe a lot of the, my success in life to growing up riding dirt bikes and you, you guys are making it harder for the future, you know, that's gonna build America, uh, to learn these values. That's all I've got. I just, um, I'd really like to see that track get opened back up.
Thank you. You can tell that hand's on soon.
Good evening. My name is Adam Schlossky. I'm a local business owner, operator. I came to show my support for the Back Nine. Um, I'm here with my two sons. We travel the country all summer long, racing dirt bikes. I think you're finally starting to see the outreach and the appreciation that how far this sport goes. How many people are involved and how much, you know, care and thought and love is put behind it. I truly hope that, you know, you find that when it comes time to make a decision. I hope you think of that and reflect on, you know, families and the lifestyle effects. Uh, as a longtime resident of the area, I don't live in this township. I live in the neighboring townships. To sit here and to listen to another development going in, to impact the roads and to impact, come on, I mean, seriously, the, the negative impact that this could have compared to what three, four hundred or two hundred houses, it didn't even seem like there was a logical number there. It's kind of all over the board. Um, I've seen this. I lived here all my life. It's, I think we need more things for kids to get involved in than to have more developments to destroy the roads that are already deteriorating. That's just my thought. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Hi, and where are you staring about? We don't even know what to start. I'm gonna be quick. Listen, let's just talk the facts. You guys are sick of us. Look, look, look at your fight posture, the way you look. You're tired of us. It's been going on for so long. Can we just please have, get a resolution? The facts are, we're mountain manor, we're, we're zoned for this. We follow the rules. We don't, we, we don't wanna ride dirt bikes twenty-four seven. Let's come to some agreement. I know you're tired of it. I can see it on your guys' faces. It's been a year. Let's progress, let's move on. I know you're tired of it. Look at the way you're looking at it. Come on, dude, look at you like this. Like, the whole time you had your hand like this. Like, last week, two weeks ago, I went to the doctor talking to you guys, come on. Come on, it's been a year. A year. Please. You're tired of it. Look at this.
Thank you.
Here it goes.
Nice. Sure, come on, that's totally different.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Canal. I live in Smithfield Township for over thirty years. Several months ago, briefly, someone brought up at a meeting about getting rid of the franchise fee for Blue Ridge Cable for Smithfield Township. Do you remember that?
Uh, we, we've talked about an, an issue with it, but.
Yeah, well, I hope we pursue it. I called to try and get my cable pulled down and I said, what is this? And they kind of didn't really know. They just said that it goes to Smithfield Township for the EMS and the, oh, isn't that already in our taxes, that new tax?
So the way that the franchise fee works though, it, it's essentially a pass-through fee, but it, it goes toward maintaining the rights of way that they utilize for the cable. And it's only on the cable, not on the internet or the other stuff that we unfortunate pay a million dollars.
I know, and they're the only game in town, so, you know.
Yeah.
It's only on TV by the way. Just on, on cable TV.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Rachel Hasky and I love to ride my dirt bike and I'm sad that we can't ride at the Back Nine. Thank you.
Hi, can I, can I just share one, one last comment?
Casper, sure.
Yeah, so my name's Casper. Uh, I spoke a while ago about, uh, Back Nine and why it's so important to me. Uh, I just wanna mention, uh, as we're still waiting, uh, I just wanna say. Uh, I just wanna mention, uh, as we're still waiting, uh, I just wanna say, uh, I've just been at home. Literally playing motorcycling games, specifically MX Bikes, which is just a dirt bike game online. So I just wanna say that, you know, a lot of kids aren't really doing much, especially with the track closed and I'm one of those. That's, that's all. Just keep that in mind.
Anyone else?
Uh, someone was trying to call in, uh, show her to call in, she can promote a speaker. Uh, his name's James Dobbs, he up there. Oh, Jimmy is there, yeah. Yeah, he can, we can. Yes, we have to ask him.
Hello.
Hey Jimmy, you got three minutes, go.
I can't hear this thing. Oh, there I am. Oh. Hello, um, my name is James Dobbs, I am from uh Carlisle, Pennsylvania. Business owner, um, fifty-two years old, so I'm not a kid like Dana was saying um. I just ride dirt bikes on the weekend to unwind, unleash, it's a nice stress reliever. Um, travel all over the country to race. I've been to California, Florida, all up the east coast. Um, and I pretty much race every weekend from. March till the end of November. So I'm pretty active in it um. And if it wasn't for racing, I'd probably be just laying on the couch on Sundays watching NFL football and getting fat, so um. Yeah, I mean, it's a good, it's a good workout um. It's uh very, very technical, hard to do, hard on the body, but. Um, something I enjoy. And what was I was gonna say? Oh, and the businesses, as they were saying, the local business there. Um, I always look for restaurants and, and um diners and stuff to try new when I go to a new track. So I'll go in and eat lunch and I'll come back later and, and uh eat dinner somewhere, so. Um, I would think the revenue of some local businesses up there would uh benefit if the track would reopen. Um, so. I wish you guys would reconsider opening it up. I don't know what else needs to be done to um, you know. To get it, to get it open. I, I guess you guys have been talking to the track about that. I, I don't know too much about it, but. Um, so yeah, that's it. It's pretty much all I have to say. Um, so just give them a chance. I'm gonna at least open it up again, give them a chance. And, and you know, let them do their thing.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
I have a question, like when can I ride?
At your house.
Like when can I get on my dirt bike, like start it up and then go ride?
I heard nobody. Seriously, it's his backyard, why can't he ride it?
They work really, really hard. I run like more than three miles each morning to get my endurance up and it'd be much easier to just ride with it.
Yeah, it's literally like, it's his yard, it's not like. I'm sorry, we're not, hold on, not the new cross talk. Once you took the right away from him to have the track, like.
I don't, I'm gonna have an answer for you.
Like, why are we waiting? More than ten years since, I don't wanna be here. I'd be home with my brothers.
I, I can tell you, Mr. Byrne, unfortunately, there's a court order that we have to comply with. In fact, at that hearing, you can drop it.
You could dissolve the injunction.
Uh, at that hearing, the judge was asked by Back Nine's attorney, can the children of the Burns. Operate their motocross on their property and the judge said no.
No, all of you, and you've done nothing with it. You've done nothing with it. Go ahead, have them kick me out, it doesn't fucking matter. You've done nothing with it.
That's not true, Ron. He said, send it back to the township, this is an issue. I want those boys back on the track. It's a township issue, Ron.
We're not having cross talk. If we have to keep the order, we're gonna keep the order.
But that's not true. He said it was up to you.
If you want to speak, you can do that in a couple minutes.
Seems we gotta find a judge's house that made the injunction.
Actually, I have the floor, I'm here in person.
I'm letting you speak, actually.
Thank you very much. I'm Elisa Byrne, I apologize for my tone, I will dial it back. I am very passionate and emotional about this, as you've seen for a year, one whole year. Okay, Jacob, one year. You comment back on everyone's comment on social media except for mine. I've tried to get in front of you, okay? I've tried. Judge Zulik said, you guys decide about the kids. You guys decide. You told me Robert doesn't wanna speak to me. I hired an attorney, a thousand dollars an hour. I pay him a thousand dollars an hour, begging you guys, you won't speak to me? Talk to my attorney, you know what your pity ass fucking thing you said was that they could ride. For an hour a week with you or you sitting there watching. These kids travel the country, I prop them up the gates, I built a track in my backyard to support their efforts. Their effort. This brave little kid came here tonight. I read letters, I get all these letters from people that live in Smithfield Township. I don't know, I don't know this man. I don't know that man, I don't know these people. There's a need for my family and for their families. And honestly, guess what? I don't read the letters from the kids in Smithfield Township. Because they make me upset because I feel like I've let them down. I opened a place for them to come and be safe and hang out. They show up, I don't even have to see them. They have tons of space to socialize, to do what they wanna do, to run around, to have a fire. To eat a piece of pizza for six hours, however many hours they're off the streets. That keeps them out of trouble. These kids writing letters, I sold my dirt bike. My grandpa bought me a dirt bike. You know what they show up in? They show up in jeans and work boots and you know, we gave them Bryce's old boots. Parker's old boots, Hudson's old boots. And guess what? They can safely ride and have fun, you guys. We're just asking you to let us ride. And that's bullshit. They said you guys can tell us. How could it be up to Judge Zulik if you offered me two days a week with a constable? It's not true, Ron.
Talking about the initial hearing.
Dissolve the injunction and let it all go. You could do it. Robert won't even show up to work. Listen to me, he could tell us we could ride tomorrow. He's sitting at home scared to hear this because it's real. Robert, when are you coming back to work? Oh, he won't answer us. I'm supposed to deal with you guys to beg you to let my children ride. He doesn't even show up. Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you for ignoring me every time I reach out. Thank you for not allowing my kids to ride.
Let's all go to Ron's house tonight.
Three days a week, Jacob, three days. You could make it happen, you could make it happen. You could tell that kid he could ride tomorrow. You could and you know it. And it's actually really beef. And all you talk about online, it's your next term and how you're getting elected. And all the stuff you're gonna do for the kids. When are you gonna let them ride in their own backyard? It's up to you. You ignore me, you ignore him. Can't answer him. Thank you for letting me share.
Can I speak?
Can you identify yourself?
Hi, good evening. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I just wanna say for a young man to stand up. And ask when he can ride in his own backyard and to just be looked at is beyond disgraceful. And if I might add, since I've talked to you about finances and I've talked to you about the court case. If you remember in the very first time I came before you, I spoke about my son. My son has a learning disability. My son was employed by Back Nine because his passion. And the one thing that kept him grounded and focused was dirt bikes. He came out of his shell socially because he was taken in by the Byrne family and Zach and I watched him flourish. Only to have that stolen away from him when the track closed. So let's not just make this about motocross, but let's give a really hard look at the opportunities that are being. Taken away from children, like the young man that stood before you tonight, Hudson, asking that question. This is detrimental to not just the riding of motocross. But the shaping of children and young adults to be able to be the best that they can be. And it breaks my heart as a mother to watch childrens ask you point blank. Hey, when can we ride? Why can't I ride in my own backyard? I implore you guys to really take a long, hard look. Yes, there is a stay in place right now, but it is supposed to be under the guise of both sides working towards a resolution. And if that doesn't happen, that stay says either party can go back to the judge and request for this to go back to court. Why does it have to get to that? If you can sit there and look that young man in the eyes and not leave this meeting tonight to talk amongst yourselves. It is beyond disgraceful. Thank you.
Any other comment? Entertaining the motion to adjourn.
So much.
Hi, yes.
It's done. Back nine.